Agenda today is fully dedicated to a review of the applications for the Transformation Initiative. And some of you submitted questions and concerns, comments, interest that were submitted to the Superintendent for his consideration. And so the first part of our discussion today will be a presentation by our Superintendent related to those questions and concerns that have been submitted. I think we've agreed that questions can be asked during the presentation for clarity. I would also add that there are a few, may I call them maintenance items, that we need to take under consideration. Before we finish today, we're scheduled to end our work session at 5:30. I'm sorry, Elizabeth, you gave me strict orders, Elizabeth, and I forgot, sorry. I hope all is well. We were late and I just kind of jumped right in. So we need to have a brief discussion on the schedule and the approach to the Superintendent's evaluation. The new board meeting format, one to address briefly. We had talked about beginning that in November. There are some implications that we need to take into consideration. And because we do have agenda planning coming up actually tomorrow morning, we'll certainly need to know the direction that the Board would like us to go with planning for November. And then there's also been an invitation again to meet with the City Council. We need to take a brief moment to talk about that meeting. And well, those are the essential things. So what I'm asking is that at 5:00 PM, we can transition to these items because I think we'll need a good 30 minutes to flesh a couple of those out. So I wanted to let us know that on the front end of the agenda so that we can be considerate of that at about 5:00 PM. All right? Any opening comments before I turn it over to Dr. King for the presentation?
Yes, I submitted the page numbers in which I would have comments or questions and not specific questions. So I will have several and none of major significance, but some are important to me.
Okay, all right. Any others? Okay, thank you. Dr. King, send your hand.
Chairman Houston, members of the Board, and yes, this is a significant opportunity to provide further information around the current recommendation relating to transformation. And so what I'd like to do is to quickly give a brief synopsis to bring us to where we are today and utilize that to pinpoint the need for change aligned with our strategic plan. And I crafted the approach based on items of interest that came from the Board, but also a sequence that I think is essential in terms of giving full attention in an objective way to the proposal. So with that said, it will be the Superintendent's recommendation that the Board authorize the team, the administrative team, to move into the next phase of planning and development of the proposed Transformation Initiative. So I'll open by saying that Superintendent recommends that the Board authorizes the administrative team to move forward into the next phase of planning. Why is that important? Well, I would like to provide again a quick refresher in terms of our school division, school organization, related directly to our students, our student population, and the link between what is being recommended and the strategic plan itself. That's important as it relates to our socioeconomic needs, our socioeconomic variables, and certainly it is important as it relates to our needs around student achievement and achievement gaps that exist within our system. I would like to attempt to put that in further perspective for all. We take a look at the entire school system and the makeup of our school system, 32,000 approximately plus students. And if we analyze that population in a way that we begin to disaggregate data, but for this purpose, in terms of taking a look at the entire school system, it is for the purpose of taking a look at economically disadvantaged proportions compared to non-economically disadvantaged proportions. I'll remind the Board that in order to be categorized as economically disadvantaged, students must qualify for free or reduced lunch. And so before you, you have a breakout of the overall population that first band, first bar centers on the total number across our system at the end of the school year that qualified for free reduced lunch. That figure centers on approximately 23,000 students. So a total of approximately 23,000 students within our system qualifying for free reduced lunch and classified as economically disadvantaged. Non-economically disadvantaged, those that do not qualify based on the results, most recent results, you see the figure there, 9,000 students. So 30% compared to approximately 71%. That's the overall student population. If we break that out in terms of our major ethnic groups, and you take a look at our African-American students, you see approximately 17,000 of our African-American students economically disadvantaged, meaning they qualify for free reduced lunch, compared, which equates to approximately 84% of that particular ethnic subgroup, compared to 3,000 students, 16,000 within that particular ethnic subgroup that will not qualify for free reduced lunch. So 84% economically disadvantaged within the African-American population. And that is our largest population, as you know. If we move into our second largest population, which is our white population, our white subgroup, you see that approximately 3,000 students within that subgroup qualify as economically disadvantaged. And approximately 4,000, non-economically disadvantaged. You move forward to multiracial, and of course you know this is based on how students and families determine that they want to pinpoint or categorize this particular item. But for multiracial, you see the approximation there, 1,200 students qualifying as economically disadvantaged, 39% none. Hispanic population, another 1,400 students qualifying as economically disadvantaged, and 607, none. Asian population, of course, you see 362 students compared to 369. American Indian, you see the numbers there, 180 compared to 105. So again, overall, in the aggregate, approximately at the end of the year, approximately 71% of our student population qualifying for free reduced lunch or economically disadvantaged. All right, so you've always heard me say, as a Superintendent, that those numbers should merely serve as variables, variables that are extremely important as we plan our work for our organization, for our system. Because if you do not hone in on those variables, then you are not going to apply the necessary interventions to ensure that our children are ready at the early learning standpoint, nor will we apply the appropriate safety nets at the upper elementary level that are necessary, nor middle, nor high school, in addition, the necessary enrichment that should come into play. Because you've heard us talk about the need to raise the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. And so I think that as we take another look at this variable in graphic form, you will better understand the concept around our work. Take a look at the elementary level related to SOLs. In blue, non-economically disadvantaged student performance. In red, economically disadvantaged student performance. For our overall elementary school program, huge gaps across those subgroups. I won't go into all of those subject areas because this is not the first time I've provided this for the Board. We call this the gap to standard that exists within our school system. Across this graph, it is a representation of 100% of our elementary children. If you think back to the initial graph that pinpointed the numbers that qualified as economically disadvantaged and the number that qualified as non-economically disadvantaged, you can see where the majority of our students are falling in terms of these categories. Thus, the challenge and the need for intervention and the need to do the work differently. We move on to middle school, and we take a look at the same approach. 100% of our middle school students are displayed across this graph, and you see the gaps. On the average across these graphs, you're going to see approximately 32 or 40% gap between where our economically disadvantaged students perform and where our non-economically disadvantaged students perform. And if you clearly understood that initial bar graph presentation, you would readily realize that across the economically disadvantaged subgroup, we have thousands of children across each ethnic subgroup, with the exception of those that are not qualifying. So in many cases, our major subgroups, of course, would be our African-American subgroups, white subgroups, multiracial, et cetera. So thousands of children are across this economically disadvantaged piece, but across all, many of our major ethnic subgroups as well. We move forward to high school. Won't spend a lot of time on that. Similar concept. You see the difference. You see the gap. You see the need. So again, I will reiterate the need to raise the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. Because clearly, when you look at the non-economically disadvantaged children, in most cases, they hover around the 80% mark and height. Math tends to be an exception. And so we know that we need to do the work to move our economically disadvantaged children simultaneously closer to the non-economically disadvantaged children, but at the same time, challenge those that are performing above that 80% range and the 90% range. So that proportion grows. Again, raising the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. However, we must accelerate the rate at which we raise the floor. Because I submit to you that if we do not, we will not close the achievement gap. It's as if you start behind in a race, and you're traveling at the same rate of speed as your competitor. If you do, you're not going to close that gap to win that race. So we have no choice but to accelerate the rate at which we raise the floor as we continue to do the things that are necessary to challenge those students that are top performers and do the work that will allow us to see that proportion increase. Okay, Strategic Plan imperatives. The strategic plan is and will always be the lifeblood of our work. We now have a five-year strategic plan in place. We have begun to move into Phase One implementation, more specifically, Phase One, Year One. And so if you take a look at those bullets, it's a reminder of the imperatives around our current strategic plan, that is, to be implemented each day for 100% of our children, for 100%. That continues. So when you speak to implementing with fidelity, that means that we must be held accountable. We must measure. We must be transparent. We must report to the Board, our stakeholders, and when we're not making the anticipated progress, we must shift gears and do what's necessary to modify the strategies that are based on the research. It's clear that we need to decrease the percentage of students who do not meet standards. That's a part of our priorities, is Board to adopt. We need to increase the percentage of the children that are exceeding. That's enrichment, but it also speaks to safety nets in terms of raising the floor. So accelerate the rate at which we do so, so that we do begin to close the achievement gap. If you don't do that last bullet, we won't close the achievement gap. Strategic Plan imperative that surfaced from the discussions across the previous year centers on the need for choice and the benefit of choice, and the innovation behind that and what that means for our parents and children of importance to us as well. Opportunities to address the schools' socioeconomic needs, very important. Each school must profile itself, just as I did a brief profile for the system around socioeconomic and ethnicity. Each school has to profile its population, meaning total numbers, how they perform in the aggregate, and how each subgroup performs when you disaggregate the data. And so the next piece, inclusive of those ethnic categories that you saw, also includes the special needs subgroup and limited English proficient subgroups. Guess what? They're all plugged into those numbers that you saw. 100% of the children are within the non-economically disadvantaged subgroups and the economically disadvantaged subgroups. If you are a student with a disability, you are there along that continuum somewhere. If you are a limited English proficient student, you are also there along that continuum. Again, it is reflective of all students. So what's the reality as you take a look at those bullets? Research is clear for urban systems with our variables that have our challenges. We were committed a long time back to making decisions based only on what works, based only on what has worked in other settings, other urban settings, but best practices with children. And that first bullet is huge. If you are challenged with a large percentage of students not meeting standards, then you run the risk, we run the risk, of remaining stuck in a cycle of underperformance if there is no intervention. So in my view, intervention is a non-negotiable. So then the question is asked, what will that intervention be? How is it research-based? The intervention is the means for carrying out the work. Second bullet, also of paramount importance. Not only must we have interventions, but interventions must look different across individual schools. Because each individual school is different. And if we are truly going to disaggregate data across what matters, then we will clearly determine that equal is not always equitable in our decision-making. Simply put, what that means is what we do and implement in one school for a student population with needs is going to be and should be different than what we implement in another school. It doesn't mean that you shortchange one school compared to another. It means that your strategies must be different. So without differentiation, without differentiated interventions, doing the same thing for all is not equitable in meeting the needs of students. So if we do the same thing for all in each school in the same way, same strategies, with a cookie cutter approach, you don't get results. Research has been clear around that. So proposed Transformation Initiative. We've talked about the benefits that I have proposed as the Superintendent to the Board and why that type of intervention has been proposed. But I wanted to briefly take a moment to travel that path once again. Flexibility aligned to the needs of students. Flexibility comes in many shapes, sizes, and approaches. Flexibility could mean that we need extended literacy blocks in some schools. It could mean, in addition, we need extended numeracy blocks. It does mean that we need to be able to have master schedules that are what I refer to as fluid. They're ever-changing, and they change based on the individual need of a particular child. So that means that the expectation would be that the master schedule or the day-to-day process for a child will be governed by his or her needs, not the reverse in terms of the adult, yes?
Can this happen currently without becoming a transformation school?
A facet of it can. What cannot is the whole notion of seat time tied to SOQs, which means that there are requirements for seat time across various subject areas. So what I am recommending is that we are able to modify the requirement of seat time across subject areas based on the needs of child X. Does not mean that you don't receive all subjects, because you do. It means that if you are a part of a specials at the elementary level, it means that seat time across some of those specials could be modified to secure more time for literacy, because maybe Sam King is a struggling reader. So now, what we are submitting is centering on having the waiver that's necessary to allow us to do that.
Okay, so we would need a waiver in order to do that?
Yes, we would need, have to have clearance for that.
Okay.
Also, of course, the school calendar piece is of utmost importance to us, and I've had a myriad of questions across that. For example, why not just extend the school year and continue to go longer into the summer? Well, that's important. However, if you think about the amount of days that we have to prepare our children for a summative assessment aligned to SOLs, if we only attach days to the end of the year, we don't have the necessary early days to help us get our children ready for the summative assessment, which is typically around May, right? Am I right? Middle part of May. So if we add days on after May, we don't have the luxury of utilizing those days to help us get our children ready. And so remember that the summative assessment links to the SOL, which is the curriculum that is required at the state level. What we teach in the classroom should be the curriculum that is aligned with SOL, the pacing guide that ensures that the right information is being taught in the classroom. And so those are things that we've addressed because we knew that we needed to improve in that regard. However, the time factor here centers on the fact that we need to be able to have the flexibility of starting earlier. And if we want to move into the intercession for summer, we need that flexibility too. However, I need the early days so that our division can have that additional time to be able to get our children ready for a summative assessment that everybody else is going to take at that same grade level. And you may ask yourself, well, why? Think back to the graph we just displayed. We've got children that are multiple grade levels behind. We know that. And in order to move our children to the level that we need, we're going to have to have more time to accelerate that rate that I mentioned earlier. But the luxury in that, for the lack of a better way to say it, is also it allows us to bring in those students that are already performing on standard based on their performance in the classroom and exceeding the standard, and provide enrichment to them. So when we speak to this calendar as a flexible opportunity, we speak to it as an opportunity for fall intercessions, winter intercessions, and summer intercessions, where we bring back students that did not master the elements of the standards during the regular grading period, provide transportation for them, and pay stipends to teachers, the best and the brightest, to provide that intervention during that week for those children. But the key is that it must be customized to the deficient element of the standard for the child. So as I've always used, if Sam King had, if Sam King mastered standards across the majority of the math that was taught, but did not secure mastery across probability and statistics, you'd invite me back during that intercession, and my customized approach would relate to probability and statistics. And the teacher that's before me would be one that was very successful in getting results during that regular grading period based on their benchmarks, based on multiple indicators around success. So flexible schedule, modify seat time, intercessions, multiple funding streams available. We've identified funding streams. But before I talk a little bit more about that, why is that important? It is important because the professional development that is necessary to continue to build support and create not just highly qualified teachers, but highly effective teachers that get results around this information. We need to be able to do that based on the needs of classrooms, not only with teachers, but also building-level leaders. We want to develop support and nurture great building-level leaders that can raise this process to an exponent so that we raise to an exponent the number and percentage of teachers that are highly effective and understand the work that I am attempting to describe to you now. Also attracting and retaining highly effective teachers by being able to move forward in a way that we can tap into by being able to move forward in a way that we can tap into multiple funding streams. It gives us the opportunity to pay those stipends to teachers to work in those schools that we know we have to accelerate the rate at which we raise the standard. We've talked a lot about this. How do you attract, but not just attract, but how do you retain teachers in challenging environments where you have to do the work differently? Because once they're there and we provide all of the cutting-edge professional development, we need to be able to keep them. And so thus the importance of being able to avail ourselves to as many funding opportunities as possible, as possible. So stipends and the support necessary for classroom teachers as well as administrators. Those two, three bullets are important as well. Preferably touch on these. Curriculum doesn't change. The SOL continues to be, the SOL approach continues to be important. The themes that are proposed are designed to serve as enhancement to the, the delivery of the curriculum. But one thing is very clear in the research around the needs when your gaps are huge. And it says that as we must provide the relevance to students and link it to appropriate experiences, you cannot afford to deny the rigor. So as we infuse and integrate the themes with the approach that we have suggested and recommended, it allows us to begin to do both. So as we begin to provide the necessary literacy needs for students, we also bring rigor to those children at the same time. We all know the research on the gap at the high school level with children that are not ready for advanced placement coursework and not ready for international baccalaureate types of approaches. And it is because of the things what we just, that we just mentioned. And these are best practices for all children. But when you talk about children that are economically disadvantaged, the item that further exacerbates the challenge is the relationship piece. That is of paramount importance as we do the work. Thus the need for the professional development necessary around it. So the themes serve as an enhancement to that curriculum. It doesn't change the curriculum. School board maintains its role in governance. That doesn't change. Now suggesting the difference in some of the notion around traditional approach and this recommendation for a conversion approach, giving you some of those examples of what the subtle differences are. Key to the process, those two bullets. I alluded to the effective principal piece and those things that are going to be important. Also alluded to the ongoing focused approach of leadership at the school level differentiated for the populations. Again, we must develop and support our principals in the way that they become very skilled at this work. And just as we differentiate our approach around what we deliver, we have to differentiate our approach around professional development for building level leaders in schools based on the needs of the schools. Can you take a look at that second bullet? I've alluded to all three. However, if you take a look at that second bullet, it speaks to the accelerating of the process of moving children from non-performance to performance to exceeding. Because when you think about the graphs that you saw across elementary, middle, and high school, and the gap in performance, huge gap in performance between children that come to us from economically disadvantaged households and those that do not, there's work to be done across all. But when you think about that huge gap, then you will readily realize that we cannot afford to move children just one year each year. I call it, back in the old days when I was in the classroom, we called those grade equivalents. And we said that we had, we were required, we expected that we needed to move children at least, at minimum, one grade equivalent. One grade equivalent. However, when you provide robust intervention aligned and customized to the need of the individual, of the individual student, you move children more than one year, more than one grade equivalent. And we must do that. That's what acceleration means. That's why we need the intercessions. That's why we need the safety nets. That's why we need the time. That's why we need the modifications. And that's why we need the access to the resources to do that. So that we're able to move these children one year equitable, equal to one year's growth in one year, but more than that, to begin to do the work. The student achievement gains, indicators that we must use to measure across a number of categories. Teacher-made assessments aligned to standards must be important because they must not all be imposed just at the central level. So professional development is about how teachers assess what they've taught and how we review artifacts and evidence of the assessments that they have developed to ensure that they do align with what was taught. And to ensure that they do measure whether or not a student has mastered the standard. So common formative assessments. Teachers work together in PLCs developing those. Teachers should be empowered to do that. Measuring student growth along the way. Portfolios, writing records, benchmark assessments. All of the above come together so that we can take a look at elements of the standard across a myriad of indicators to determine that a child is truly moving forward. And then when we present to you at minimum on a quarterly basis, it is around this information. It is around where children are at every level and the progress that is being made. Because in many cases, the benchmark at the state level is here. And if you take a look at where we're performing as a school, we are here. And what the board and the governance leadership team should be concerned around was centered on how are we making progress towards that benchmark? And where were we at the beginning and where are we now? From a formative standpoint, that's the report. That's the kind of information that you should be receiving across all of these items. So then schools and leaders must become astute with data analysis and making decisions based on that analysis. Not just entering into the analysis, but turning the analysis into action based on what it tells us. Providing that support. And being laser-like in our approach, but totally accountable for moving forward with those, those gains. And when we don't, we answer in terms of what we're gonna modify and what we're gonna do differently. Yes, sir?
Can I just pause just for one moment? So as we leave this meeting today, what are, what's, what's the takeaway? What are we being asked to do? I know we got a memo. You started off talking about the continued planning. And I appreciate where you're going. So I do wanna hear that because I think it's important. But as you're going through this, I'd just like to get a sense of, what is it that you want me to take away from this as we have to make decisions as a, as a board?
Okay, good question. Of course, I open with stating that I'm gonna want the board to give approval to the superintendent to move forward in the next phase of planning. But in addition to that, I want to ensure that the board and the governance leadership team understands what those graphs, which I opened, really tells us. And so ensure that we're all on the same page about what it tells us and how we need to do the work to begin to change that. And so I want you also to have a takeaway around, because this is, this, this transformation centers on 10 schools and an open campus high school. It centers on those 10 schools because as we did the work last year, we took a look formatively at a number of indicators. Whether it centered on benchmark results, whether it centered on common formative assessments, whether it centered on results from mock writing assessments. A number of assessments. And long story short, these 10 schools, based on that analysis, can benefit in a huge way from this event, from this transformation initiative. Because when you, when you take a look at the numbers of schools, where our students are performing, we've gotta start, we must begin the transformation at a variety of levels. And your takeaway from this in terms of these 10 is that we really can't wait with this type of support. Yes, sir?
And I think if there's a gap among us, the gap is certainly not in the information you've covered so far. It's in the mechanics of the how. And so I think it's important that as we move toward the decision that we want to make today, that the questions regarding the mechanics of the how, if I may use that term, you know, are sufficiently answered so that there's a level of comfort, you know, with, with, with this approach to solving the problems that you have definitely sufficiently and effectively laid, laid before us.
All right. The how thus far centers on the time modification.
No, when I say the how, I mean the, the, there's specific questions that have, that have, that have been submitted. Those, those technical aspects that I think team members just kinda want clarity around.
Okay.
You know, you follow what I'm saying?
All right, lottery. I'm sure that's one.
Ding, ding, ding.
All right. As a part of the next phase, and remember, a part of asking the board to allow us to move into the next phase consists of the fact that we already have community members that are, have stepped to the plate to sign up to work collaboratively with the administration, the superintendent's designees, et cetera, to build some structure around what the lottery means for us. But at the same time, we have worked with our legal counsel to build structure around what that means to us.
Can I just interrupt you once again? When you talk about our next phase, I know we, we, we received a letter with the applications. Can you just describe? I mean, I read it, but I can't tell you I fully understood what it was saying.
It's in front of the binder.
You know, I, I read the letter, but I wanna make sure I understand what the letter is saying to me in terms of what that next phase really, really means. Because originally, we were coming down a path where we were considering voting on 10 or 11 individual applications today. We're not doing that. We did get the draft applications and we provided back some questions around those drafts. But in the recommendation that's coming forward, you're asking us to allow you to continue to plan over another period of time. And I just wanna make sure I understand what that phase is consistent.
What that phase looks like and how it impacts the next calendar year to the extent that it does.
Okay, and that's, that's coming.
Okay.
And if I could add to that, in, in this phase that you are suggesting, does that take into account what we need to have done different in Richmond, General Assembly or elsewhere that is required to move this along as well? So given the timing that's been outlined in phase one, that's January, when in fact, General Assembly is a 60-day session. So that's one of my questions as well.
I feel that what you were here will address that. All right, so as a part of the next phase of the proposal, of course, I mentioned the, the community committee. And the community committee around the lottery will have collaborative involvement with the administration, superintendent's designees, et cetera. But of course, to finalize those details around the enrollment process. And it's a requirement for us that the final application will include all of the tenants of what that means. And so, and here's what we mean by that. We know what those, that legal guidance that we've received thus far around the lottery. And those parameters must guide the decision-making in this next phase for that committee. Such as, the lottery may be written as a tailored admission policy that meets the specific mission or focus of the school. And so this is legal guidance that we've received here locally from our, our local council, legal council, as well as in consultation with the state level in terms of seeking clarity for what we know we need to do here. So then that has implications for the work that the committee would do. Because as we know that legally, the lottery can be written as a tailored admission policy that meets the specific, the specific mission of, or the focus of the school, then we want to develop what that's gonna look like for us. Now, a number of things come into play because we've talked about, or we'll mention, the fact that in the strategic plan, choice options surface as an item of interest and benefit for us. As well as beginning to have the, the capacity to open up seats in schools so that students can make choices across themes so that other students can make choices in reference to transferring into schools as we transform schools and change perception. But we must have a process built by the committee aligned with the legal guidance that will allow us to do that. But we do know that legally, the lottery can be written as a tailored admission policy that meets the specific mission or focus of the school. So we've received that, and that's gonna be a parameter that the committee uses. And that the tailored admission policy will be included, of course, as I mentioned, in that packet that comes to you as we update and adjust. So as the committee does it, it's work, then that's what we will provide to the board in terms of the recommendation that comes from the committee. I review that recommendation and I provide that to the board for your review around what the lottery will look like in these particular schools. Yes?
So the lottery, in terms of what a lot of the public understands it to be, is you start with zero. You say the school has 200 slots. Everybody gets a number, however many applicants there are. And then if you pick between one and the 200, you are allowed to go to that school. That's what the general public thinks of as a traditional lottery system. However, what you are telling us is that from legal counsel, that the committee teams that were volunteered to be on the lottery committee now have the green light to tailor a lottery policy that fits that particular school in the transformation.
Yes, unless we work within the statute and the requirements that are given us, yes.
Okay, what are those?
Well, that's what we're outlining here. And I know, I know Attorney Pitch goes with us and he may wanna provide some additional information in reference to this, but Attorney Cloud provided this for us as a readiness piece for that.
Question about that. So when I think of tailored admission policy...
So let's say we were having a thematic charter school that was targeting a specific demographic. And so you tailored your admission policy saying that you're gonna serve, I don't know, say it's an all-girls school. So then your tailored admission is that it's all girls. But when you get down to the lottery component, if you have 200 seats and 300 applicants, that the law as it is written today says that you have to open up those seats to the entire district. And if you have more applicants than you have seats, then you go the, the lottery method that Dr. Gabriel was just describing. So correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. So that the tailoring, as I understood it, was around the theme or as... was around the theme, or as you said, the, um, the specific mission or focus of the school. But when you get down to the math of it, it's still required that you have, uh, open enrollment across the district. And then it would, the lottery system would kick in if you had more applicants than you had seats.
Want to comment on that?
We're a little bit in uncharted waters, and I'm pitching for Jack today. The Rays were playing Sox the other night, they had a pitch hitter coming to knock one out. I don't think I'll knock one out today, but I've been working with, with Jack. And to an extent, um, what this, uh, conversion appears to allow us to do, and I do think we're the first ones to be taking advantage of it, is, I'll put it clichically, is have our cake and eat it too. And so, um, we're working on, on the full latitude that tailored admissions gives us. It, it certainly permits us to do something more than just a pure lottery. And, and so I think that what we're working towards is being able to, as you said in your example, if we wanted it all one gender, or if we wanted, if we identified a school that had common characteristics that needed support, and we wanted to keep that group together, that, that we have the ability to try to have our cake and eat it too. Um, to open it to the entire city, but at the same time, to succeed in getting our target group in the school. And so that, that's what we're working, uh, towards. And, and that, um, we are in, uh, uncharted waters. Uh, it's charter school and uncharted waters, that, um, uh, we're the first to take advantage of this flexibility.
Right, we're, we're the first to take advantage of the conversion element. But it's my understanding, as of right now, that, um, the, the charter law as it is written applies to us until we get some legislative changes.
That, that's right, but that's under the.
Let me finish. So that while we are new to the conversion model, we do have, uh, five existing charters in the state. And we do have many other organizations that have submitted applications under the old process to the state board, um, for, uh, charter schools. And so, I mean, if we have that flexibility, then, then, then great. But I'm just saying that, at least today, everything that, that, at least I've seen, from the VSBA manual to the, uh, state charter and other things, don't seem to support that. So if you're, if you're saying it's different now, then, you know, I guess you'll just give us a legal opinion and we'll, we'll go down that path. But I do think it is critical that we be clear. Because if you are a parent, and you're trying to make decisions around, um, you know, what theme or what, uh, particular focus that you may want your child to take advantage of, you know, it's just, it's just critical that we be clear on that. And I think it also goes to, uh, Courtney's question earlier around, if we are going to be trying to make changes at the state level, I just think we just have to be clear. And for me, every time we have a meeting around this topic, the answer is different. And I'd just like for the answer to be consistent, so that we know going forward what decisions we have to make based upon, you know, some concrete legal guidance.
To answer your question, it is different. Uh, so that the, uh, public conversion is different from giving a, a public funds for a privately-run charter school. It, it is different. And since we're the first, that's where my uncertainty is, is in how different is it? It's definitely different, but that we're pioneering a little bit. One of the major differences is that with the private, private school charter, uh, the Board of Education has to determine, uh, that you've met all the criteria. In the public conversion, that refereeing shifts to you.
Correct.
Uh, so, so that the, this board will, will be the one that, working with the superintendent and the expertise that's given to you, determines the management committee, uh, the tailored admission policy, a, a, and, and all of those things that we've been talking about. So it's different, but that I, I, I wouldn't be able to say to you, here is one that exists, and this is how it differs from a private one. When we finish this, we'll be the people who will be able to comment on how different ours are from a private. And they may turn out to be much closer, uh, than, than, than I might imagine. But to answer your question, it is different.
So then in the next, I'm sorry, so then in the next phase, the current schedule calls for this lottery component to be finalized, what is it, March, April timeframe? Is that, is that correct?
January and February.
Oh, January, February. And is the idea with January and February, with the plan then to be able to implement in time for September of next year?
Yes, next school year. What, what, what I believe is that, based on legal opinion thus far, legal guidance thus far, working with the committee, the community committee, and my administrative team, within the parameters of these legal guidelines, that we're going to be able to develop a clear definitive outline of a process lottery, lottery related, that will not require that we have to approach the state. That's what I believe. However, if as we do the work in consultation with the attorneys, if the board allows us to move into the next phase of planning, we find that it is necessary to have some modifications at the state level. We would certainly have the language that we need to provide to legislators to move forward and ask them to provide this for us. But I don't believe that that's going to be necessary based on what I think I know from the legal opinions that have been, again, rendered so far, which really removes some potential obstacles from us.
So can I ask you, Bernard, this is the first time we're hearing about the tailored admissions policy. And it was our understanding that there was going to be a change in Richmond required in order for this lottery to move forward in a different fashion. So that's new for us today, and are we seeking any guidance out of the Department of Education out of Richmond for them to affirm what we are saying? Or the Attorney General's Office, or wherever else, to affirm that our understanding is what they would also agree with, so that we don't run into the crosshairs at some point with saying, this is our interpretation, this is ours, and then are we not able to move forward?
Yes, we are, and, um, we're concentrating on asking the, um, Department of Education, Board of Education, to help us. And i- i- at first, um, they said, we really don't want, we don't really see a role for us that the statute shifts it to the local board, and don't even, and, and they've said, okay, we, we see the wisdom of participating with you. And, and so that, um, that they are, um, being helpful and participating. And so that the way we're approaching it is, is certainly to try to, uh, address and eliminate uh, a- any decision that might become a, a point of contention. And that the tailored admission policy, it, it is new. It, it new to you. It's been sitting in the statute, and, and, um, it, it became obvious to us, as our goal got better defined to us, that there was a provision there that might be helpful to our goal of targeting populations and, at the same time, um, opening it up to the entire city. So as I said earlier, I, I think that we've, we've got some targeted populations, or in the language of the statute, tailored admission. Uh, and, um, we have a goal to comply with the requirement of having a, a lottery. So that, uh, it, it's not finished today, they're not here for you to vote on, but, um, that is certainly the goal, is what you had said, is to, um, bring the, uh, Department of Education along with us.
I mean, I think we definitely need to do that, so that we're not going to the end line, and then there's a different interpretation.
That's the question, yeah.
Along the way.
So our, uh, if, if what we're hearing is correct, our tailored or targeted population would be what?
It's, uh, of course, specific to the individual school. And the target population right now resides within that school. And, but, but, but in addition, building in, at the same time, open seats so that we can have the opportunity to begin the process of other tran- transferring in to take advantage of what we are promoting here. Now, I don't think that tomorrow, or yesterday, we're going to get the influx that we would like to ultimately see, but it begins to open up the opportunity for choice. It begins to open up to incrementally, the opportunity to modify, again incrementally, the proportion of massive high poverty in individual schools by having attractive opportunities in schools in a way that we haven't had before. In addition, it gives the opportunity for parents on a limited basis. And this is what I think, because the committee is going to talk. But this is, this is what I expect, that there will be, of course, opportunities for parents to say, well, I would like to be able to, um, transfer my student to another school. Well, it is my view that it is the administration's responsibility to determine, based on capacity, where those options are. Thus, the importance of paralleling the DeYoung-Richter study and all of the above with what we're doing. And this gives us that opportunity to do so as we move forward in that phase.
But we would have the, uh, so let's say we're tailoring admissions. And so if you go back to your original chart, where you were showing the performance of, uh, economically disadvantaged students versus non-economically disadvantaged students. So, are we going to look at tailoring so that we have, um, specific efforts around trying to lessen the concentration of socially, economically disadvantaged students so that what all the research suggests? So is that something that we're going to specifically try to target, even if we may or may not reach that target in terms of who actually applies for the, for the school?
Yes, absolutely. That's what I meant when I said incrementally. It will allow us to begin to do that. So, yes, that's the reason I use the term thirty seats. I don't know what that number's going to be, based on what we find. But what I plan to do is provide those parameters, those variables for that committee to say, here are the things that we know we want to see happen. And now let's build a process within the law, within the parameters of the legal requirements, that will allow us to move forward to begin to accomplish that. And what does that look like? And once we do that, of course, we can keep you abreast along the way. But that's the process that's going to find itself in that individual packet for each of those ten schools, built with those things in mind. And so that's the intent, and that's why, again, in my view, the notion of going the conversion route is of great importance to us, because it opens that door and gives us that opportunity to begin to do that. Again, it won't be a panacea, nor a silver bullet overnight, nor are we going to have fruit basket turnover in schools, and I don't want that. But I think by doing this incrementally, as we do this, and center on the socioeconomic challenges of schools, and at the same time, begin to transform schools by bringing in the necessary professional development tied to these themes that require additional professional learning for teachers and for principals, that everybody wins as we build that process. Because the, the research is very clear around what needs to be done in schools that have profiles like ours, even when you are not doing the socioeconomic piece. But what we are recommending is that we build this and have it approved in the way that we begin to do both simultaneously. So the next item is of similar interest to the board, and, uh, similar concepts apply. And that's the management committee. So I want you to take a moment to take a look at that. And of course, and what you're going to see here is also grounded in the legal, um, advice that has been rendered and given to us at this point. But not that first bullet. That first bullet is, in my view, the value of management teams across our, our schools that can benefit from the great resources and great intervention. It forces more stakeholder involvement, more transparency across what's happening with the work across schools. Thus, I think going back to a major priority that the board maintained, marketing and changing the perception of schools. The more people are involved in the process and see the growth and change, then they more than own it and become accountable in supporting that. And so, this is an opportunity that we have with the management teams, again, in my view, to bring the community together, as we have attempted to do with the strategic plan, to carry out the mission and the vision for the school system with the five-year plan in terms of becoming the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. But also, schools carrying forward their site-based missions and their visions that they would develop that align with this. So, as a part of the next phase, if you take a look at that, of course, we have committees that we want, in the same concept as before. People have volunteered in the community to come together to be a part of building the structure around what our management committees should look like. Of course, as they do the work, they do the work collaboratively with administrators, or superintendents designees, but within the parameters of our legal guidance. And so here's what we know so far, and that's what you see on the screen, that third bullet. The groups must be represented on the management team committees. Those groups are dictated by statute, and you have those listed. They consist of parents of students within the school, teachers within the school, administrators, of course, principal, administrators within the school, representatives of school sponsors, in other words, business partners, people that come forward to adopt or support the school. Other legal parameters that we know. And parameters that this committee will use collaboratively with my administration. Of course, it will be the role of that committee to do the work within the guidance, the legal guidance, and bring recommendations to me, so that I can keep you abreast of what the pulse is along the way before we reach the final outcome. So the number of representatives of each group and the details of the management committee's authority will rest with discussion across that committee, the committee's stakeholders, the administration, and, in collaboration with legal, to determine that the authority piece that we build in for that management team, that it is within the statute. Superintendent will then make a recommendation to the board, and of course, that will be linked to the final application. But all of these things will work in concert to ensure that it meets the letter of the law. And again, I believe that we can do this without having to change the legislation at the state level. And so if we find that that is not the case, then of course, we have, uh, the capacity and documentation that we'll need and we will have to submit in a timely manner to work for that change. Comments, questions on that piece?
I do have a question. So, we believe today the management committees can come in under our current legal structure. Should we find that that can't take place? We would need to very quickly, though, get legislation proposed, crafted, and put forth before the General Assembly. So how quickly will you know that this structure is in fact?
We should know this, um, I would say by the early part of December, and have wording around what that should be. And be ready to give it over to, uh, legis- a legislator or a legislative body to sponsor it, to secure emergency action on it, but only specific to Norfolk.
Right.
That would be my expectation.
Okay.
But my ultimate expectation is that we don't have to go that route. Yes?
Dealing with trying to get bills through the legislative process in Virginia because of the short, the shortened session, my recommendation would be to go. my recommendation would be to go ahead and have the legis, have that legislation crafted before December. And, and have your sponsors lined up prior to that, so you're not waiting till December. It should be done now and talking to our supporters in the Senate and in the, in the House of Delegates. A lot of bills are already sent over to legislative services, and they, and they craft them in Richmond. So they're prepared for the, because they, they saw twenty-eight hundred bills in a matter of forty-five days last year. So you have to have your ducks in a row before, if, if you anticipate any kind of issue.
Kind of piggybacking on that, I guess, um, I think what I would recommend, or maybe what I'm expecting is that the, that you and your team would have an idea of what you want management committees to do and how you want them to function, what responsibilities they would have. And then you would present that to us. And then we would look at our existing policies and compare what you're recommending to our existing policies, plus maybe just our own wants. So for example, here, it mentions dress codes. So we all know that the whole process around school uniforms and how many percentage of the parents have to sign off on something, whatever the existing process is, that, uh, that's always of, of interest as schools try to move towards, uh, toward uniforms, for example. So we, I think we have to have a conversation based upon those recommendations. Is that something that we think belongs down at the school level with a management committee? Or do we think it still belongs at the board governance level? And then have those things worked out, and then from that, where we find gaps. Uh, if we find that there's some problem at a state level, then we know what that strategy is. But I, part of the, as I was going through the applications and some of the comments I already made around the management committee area, it seemed like there was loose in terms of what we could do. What I really want you to tell me is what do you wanna do? And then let us have a discussion around, from a governance perspective, you know, how we feel about it, or how do we, how do we get that, get that done?
And I, and I would like to do that both with the lottery piece as well as the management committee team piece. But immediately start the work, the work that's necessary with the committee so that, that involvement is there, of course, within the parameters that are necessary. And then once that's done, that comes to me, of course, and once I have that, comes to you. Which means that, because what we built in the majority of the, in terms of expectation of the agenda going forward, November and December, is that that, in each meeting, there was the opportunity for update for where we are. And so I would expect that if the board gives approval to move forward with planning, we would quickly convene those committees to begin this discussion. And of course, there are some things that I'm gonna be interested in, but these are just examples of what the law allows. And so, and then share that with you in terms of what we recommend and get feedback in a timely manner so that we will be on target and on schedule with both of those. That's the intent. So your, uh, management committee continues. You see that it must abide, and that's the really, really, it speaks to the question and comments that are foremost, I believe, for the board, that the committee must abide by school board policy, and you can't violate that. Principal maintains his or her authority, of course, serves as a management team member, all of those kinds of things. And so you see those other examples there, but that will be vetted and further discussion across those committees to determine what's good for us for the particular school. All right, and so we talked a lot about funding streams that have been, yes, ma'am?
Oh, sorry. Is there gonna be a difference between a management team and an advisory council? Because I've seen both of those terms used.
Right. Well, I, I prefer the management team piece. We've used both in this packet, but I anticipate that being tweaked to the point that it meets the need. So, but now, what I expect is that each one of them will have that at management team, that management team. The advisory council, I find as an additional piece that's already present in the school. So I don't feel that that's a necessary piece. Now, I may be overruled by the committee in terms of what that means, because advisory is, is advisory. But when you look at the research around advisory committees, first off, you have to have a management committee.
Right.
But when you look at those that have advisory and management, the advisory makeup is very similar to the management team makeup. And so they're only gonna be providing advice to the management team and then above, so.
For our purposes, then we're just dealing with the management?
In my view, yes. Any comments?
While we have advisory committees at all schools as part of the strategic planning process that, so is it, uh... So to the extent that we have advisory committees, is the idea that the same advisory committee that works on the school-based plan would likely be the same advisory committee, at least in the proposed transformation initiative, that would have the dual role of the, uh, strategic plan and whatever other specific things you would want them to handle as it deals with these schools?
I believe that the advisory teams that will be developed or are already existing at those schools will, many of those members will become members of the management team and will serve the purpose of the steps that are necessary to build the site-based plans for strategic planning. Because what I don't wanna do is layer another piece on, on top of something that's not necessary.
With transformation schools, you see the advisory, the management team playing the role. That the advisory team is playing in all the other schools in addition to those other functionalities.
Just as we want to fine tune the strategic planning process for schools. We've got those schools that are required to do certain things at the state level as it relates to Endstar and planning and all of those kinds of things. But at the same time, they're having, they're gonna have to go through the site-based planning process. Well, you want the necessary items that the state requires to be merged into that same process so that you don't have multiple things going on and additional stress and anxiety for schools. Because we're working, we're looking to work more efficiently, to quickly get to the needs of children, and to work smarter in that process. So all those things are gonna have to be merged, even with moving into the point where each school is gonna have its own site-based plan.
So if the schools that are under, uh, school improvement, it's my understanding, school improvement process, they also require parental and other stakeholder involvement or whatever their teams are called?
I don't understand.
I don't either.
Welcome to our world.
We're all on the same page.
Sure you're right.
She's smart. She's really smart.
So in, to your, I guess, one is your, that was too easy, sorry.
I guess you planned it.
But I guess, based upon what we, uh... Can, can you just talk about what you would hope we would do and what we may be required to do right now in terms of, you know, if the school improvement program requires, uh... the advisory group? And I assume in the conversation that we're having with the state, we would talk to them about the groups being one in the same or being merged or functionality. But can you just talk a little bit about what the state currently requires in terms of the school improvement piece of it and how that complements or perhaps in some case is in conflict with the, the transformation piece of it?
I feel that it is not in conflict with it, um, if done appropriately. Because I'm gonna open with a couple of statements, and then I'll ask, uh, Dr. Sevigny and Dr. Simmons to, to jump in wherever they choose to. But the state's expectation is that you involve the, the appropriate stakeholders in the process of decision-making to build a plan that aligns with the needs of your school based on what the data tells you about student performance. And so as you do that, you bring those people to the table with the appropriate statistics. You pour over those statistics, you make decisions about what you see, you develop strategies for moving forward. Of course, you have to go through the, the mission and the vision process just like we did. But what I just described is what the state expects us to do. But they have a template and a process for doing so. What I'm suggesting to you is that I want to utilize the template that the state approves for that process. So I don't wanna build an additional template so that the school has to do two plans. So we want it to be one plan, we want it to be one process, so that when that school brings its stakeholders to the table, if it is indeed this management team, then it serves that purpose. And then it links to all the things that are necessary. And then we build standardization across schools with how we build our plans. So, uh, and that's the unknown for schools because they've not done the work the way I'm describing at this point over the last few years, I'm told. But by doing this, it should help them to fine tune that process. And I think that any angst or anxiety around the unknown with that really centers on what I mentioned earlier. Am I gonna have to do dual processes? Am I gonna have to do this and what the state has? My, my answer to that is no. Those things ought to be one in the same. It should be merged in the process of how we do the work. Comments?
And we're working to make sure that the ninety-three indicators, which is what I'm sure you're referencing in regard to the priority schools, are aligned and correlate or support the strategic planning process. And the component that you referenced is stakeholder engagement, and there are certain standards underneath that that the schools have to complete as part of their school improvement process. But it's open enough so that schools are able to engage the stakeholders to meet the needs of the plan that they craft to meet their needs. So it's left open for the schools to develop as long as they incorporate the tenants of each of the standards inside the, inside the stakeholder engagement component.
In the current timeline for those schools that are underneath that criteria to establish those teams?
They have three years to complete and demonstrate with evidence that they have completed all ninety-three of those indicators.
Right, but they, some, some have been under for a longer period of time and some, I guess, are new. So is that three years from this year or three years from the time that they entered into the?
Well, because of the, the unique nature that the state is rolling through right now, the timeline for the schools, whether they're in cohort one, cohort two, or cohort four, is similar in terms of attaining those particular milestones. So for right now, the seven schools that we have that are priority schools are on the same three-year cycle in regard to demonstrating they have achieved those standards.
And are all seven of those in this, in the initiative?
Yes, or six of the seven.
Six. What's the one that's not?
Campus study.
Campus study.
Okay, before you, we have identified funding streams that are potential for us. Going forward, on the left side, you see federal opportunities that are there. On the right side, you see private grant sources tied to, um, the whole transformation charter approach on the right side. And so on the left side, of course, those are federal initiatives. Some of those, we're already submitting information around to, to attempt to secure funding to support this effort. And so we'll continue to provide that and hopefully be able to put, place a price tag beside each so that you will, um, understand and be able to internalize how many dollars are available across each one of those that's listed. Of course, that doesn't mean we're gonna get all of it, but it tells us the items that will be available for us, yes.
So forgive me if I'm preempting you, but are you also gonna speak to, this is gonna supplement what we have in our budget to support the charters?
Yes.
And we still need to see, again, a three- to five-year plan financially of what this is gonna cost the system and where the gap is to know where these need to fill. So I didn't know if your next slide would get to that. Because not all of those private grants, by the way, are focused on all throughout the United States, like the Crown and the Nellie. They're regional. Crown is Chicago, Nellie is New England.
But, but they have an outreach division for those two that are specific to social change. And this falls into the social change window.
Okay.
From the innovation perspective.
Okay, because, and that, which just wasn't clear to me, because just, we didn't wanna put all of our eggs in a basket thinking they give to all when they don't necessarily.
No, they don't. It's very specific. You're exactly right.
Okay.
Can you go back to that previous slide for a moment? So, um, as we're charting new waters, you know, pun intended. The typical conversion charter definition is taking a public school and converting it to a private charter. I'm saying the, the typical definition. It's like in California. That's not correct?
Not convert, if you use the word conversion, it's not correct.
Right, I'm saying in, when others use the word conversion.
Charter, when they use the word charter.
I'm not focused on charter, I'm focused on conversion. When others use the word conversion, or even in the, uh, the state improvement, you know, one of the options that you have is that you could convert to a charter. You could take an existing public school, convert it to a charter that's run by a private entity.
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. We, it's clear that's not what we're proposing.
Right.
But to the extent that you know around the country, are there others who are looking at doing a conversion where it stays under the local government and that they have, uh...
Local board?
The local board. And, um, and that there's some movement or, uh, funding source that's particularly or specifically trying to fund what you're talking about? Or is it, or is it, or we're really just gonna try through the social innovation to let folks know what we're doing?
Here's what I do know.
Okay.
That what I have not, what I have not seen is a reference to potential funding solely for a conversion that stays with the local board. However, what I have seen centers on the eligibility for systems like ours. When you do make that conversion and you maintain control as a local board, you link it to your strategic plan, but they take a look at the role of the management team also. The accountability, the transparency, and all of those things come into play to determine whether you get those dollars or not. And on the right side are essentially, that right side consists of the majority of the ones pinpointed that apply to charters and to social change. On that left side will, will be federal level opportunities.
It's like the Walton Foundation also is funding efforts to try to get rid of school boards altogether.
Okay.
Just say we just have to be.
I wasn't looking at that part.
No, no, I'm just saying you have to be aware of that.
We'll go to a different call on my end.
It's a different outreach program.
All right, this is a new piece as well. Dr. Thornton, our chief financial officer, has been working with, doing research with how this type of approach is funded. And also looking at how we are accessing dollars to do professional development this year from our current budget. So not new dollars out of this year's budget, but utilizing our current monies through, um, school improvement, Title II A. And what else? Did I miss something? Local funding, okay? And so I know that's difficult to see, but I think that we're providing, don't we have copies of this? Do we have copies of that?
Of this piece?
Yes.
Oh, we'll, we'll send out.
Okay, we don't have hard copies? Okay, well, we'll get this. This is a five-year look. This is, this, okay, okay, all right. So it is there. Hopefully you can read that, because it is small print.
It's on board notes?
Okay, it's on board notes. All right, so it shows the current year, and then it shows a projection of what we think will happen going forward. Of course, you saw the, the funding streams that we want to have the potential of accessing. Uh, this year, we have it covered in terms of the professional development. And so we will also provide to you individual, uh, budget summaries like this over a five-year period for each of those, uh, uh, schools, for each school. And... for each of those, uh, uh, schools, for each school, and what it means. Because these dollars will arrive that based on looking at the needs of pre-IB over a five-year period, based on looking at the needs of Avid over a five-year period, based on the needs of STEM, based on the needs of professional development that may be necessary for, um, employing monetary strategies and professional development as that, um, is required. So, this is just a five-year summary. And you see the year one, you see year two, year three, year four, year five. And so if you have questions on that, you, okay, of course, can feel free to ask us about that and also to, uh, Dr. Thornton, because they are, these numbers are arrived at based on the differences that we anticipate in each of the budgets. Any comments?
I'd have to look at it much more.
Okay.
I'll reserve the right to have comments, questions later.
Clarifying questions, so are you saying this is by school or this is a roll-up of all ten schools?
All ten.
I don't think it's nearly enough.
No, it is enough.
Thank you.
Well, as we review, maybe it won't be, and if it's not, we'll tweak it. So, that's, you wanna, Dr. Thornton, you wanna comment on?
Yeah, I would, uh, I would categorize it as preliminary. And based on the preliminary program needs that Dr. Zivigni has identified, and we just plug those into the document that you have there, uh, which is a one-page summary. But, uh, at this point, they would be considered preliminary. Based on some very generic expectations of what professional development and some of the other supply and material needs will be.
Just, so last, in this current budget, we provided how much for safety nets across the entire district?
Half a million dollars.
Half a million, and we know that was.
For the second year in a row.
Right, we know that was, uh, nowhere near enough compared to what we would like to do.
Right.
And, uh, and these ten schools, at least with the intercessions and other things, I would think are gonna have a significant amount of what we call safety nets.
Right.
And I'm not sure where that, I'm not sure I even see where that falls in this, on this chart. Just as an example, why, why I don't think it, you know, would be enough. And then, uh, we do have pupil transportation to be determined, but I think that's gonna be a, depend upon what happens with the enrollment process, um, that would be significant. So.
Because there are still so many unknowns right now, and we're waiting on lots of pieces to come together. This is why I'm labeling it as preliminary, and as those holes are filled in, then, then, um, some of these numbers may change.
Just one other question then, on the earlier chart, one of the beginning charts, we identified, um, I don't know if it was stipends or added enrichments in order to try to, um, secure and retain those highly effective teachers. Is that, is that in this initial document that?
Well, because we don't know yet how many days those will be, are we looking at? Because that calendar hasn't fleshed itself out yet, so we put some preliminary numbers in sixteen seventeen. But, I don't know if I'm looking at that correctly, in sixteen seventeen, but for next year, we're not sure how many those days, how many days will be there. So we will be able to fill in another column here within the next few weeks.
Yeah, if I could, I just think that to Warren's point, we're just gonna have to take a look at this budget a little bit more closely, even though it's preliminary. I grant you that, just so that we have a better understanding of it, because these are clearly just ballpark numbers. And maybe we need a session offline, not offline per se, but just maybe a focus session on this so we have a better understanding how it fits into the larger budget prior to us going into the next budget season. So that we are far more informed in terms of making next year's budget. Because when city council asks us, what do we need? And I'd like to be able to answer the question with something related to this that we know we can ask for legitimately.
Right, and, and, and all of that, as I see it, is gonna tie into when we develop the specific plan for each school, how many pupils are gonna be allowed in that school? And then what are the, what classes are gonna be offered? And then how many teachers are we gonna have in that building? Because we, we want it to be tailored to those specific programs, STEM, Avid, IB. And so that's gonna be very important, uh, for us to know, um, and, and to move ahead.
Sure. I agree.
And then the safety net money that we have right now, the five hundred thousand dollars, you know, can we leave that five hundred thousand dollars for the other schools not to be considered in the transformation? And then hopefully with the extra grant money that you would theoretically get, use it for those schools in particular? Or are we still gonna have to share that money, uh, amongst those schools? And then the other question that I had is, um, with a, with a conversion designation, does that take away any title funding for us?
No.
None?
No, because it remains a public school.
Okay.
That's, that's why that's important.
Okay.
Okay, again, the superintendent will recommend that the board authorize the team to move into the next phase of planning and develop the proposed transformation initiative as described. That relates to the first ten. And, um, so, the next phase of planning, development. Phase one, year one, strategic plan continues, implementation quarterly updates to the board. The board will receive its first quarterly update next month. And the overall strategic plan implementation, uh, the committees, we already talked about that. We will continue with the Young Richter, and we know that, that, um, the expected timeline to receive that information is a latter part of November first of December as well. We will utilize that with our decision-making and, and as necessary with the committees. Um, as you have alluded to, budgetary implications will continue, and we will build that as we see, more of what we anticipate in terms of numbers across schools tied to the Young Richter and that those results that could impact that overall five-year look that we have begun to pinpoint. And so finalized applications, we expect to provide those, the final, final application piece to the board in January, February timeframe. That's important because what I would like to see happen is to have the opportunity to begin early next year. And in order to do that, we need to give time and communication to parents around what that means. And so we don't, we don't need to go beyond this period of making a decision about what next year is gonna look like across the recommendation here. So, of course, that will continue. I, I would like to just briefly close with, yes.
So, just clear, so if we have finalized applications in January, February, and we also determine that we need some legislative changes, how are we going to align the legislative? The legislative changes may not get signed into law until, what, March?
April.
April?
April, May.
Yeah.
Sometimes July.
Well, I mean, since it's a short session, I would think.
It's a sixty day.
I'm sorry, sixty day. So we're talking April, I guess, after the veto session, all that. So how, it just seems to me it needs to be some strategy that, uh, like tomorrow, you can, you can know with some level of certainty, and I'll lean to our legal counsel, to please help the superintendent know with some level of certainty what he can and cannot do, based upon existing law, so that if the administration's gonna come back to us, should we consent with, um, recommendations in January and February, there is no more time for, in my opinion, for maybes and couldas and wouldas. We need, you need to know what you can do.
But what I would like to do.
And then make some proposals on that. If something changes after that, then so be it. But you can't come back to us in January and February, still not knowing with a certainty what you can and cannot do based upon the existing law.
What I would like to do, I think we alluded to it a little bit earlier, someone made, actually made a suggestion to. At the same time that we work with those committees, build the language around what we feel we need and begin to have that dialogue and research the path for that. Because I do know that there is what I refer to as an emergency measure that can be taken in early January that my understanding does not have to wait until the April point to come, to come into fruition.
As long as we get the votes.
As long as we get the votes, right. And so that's why I think it's essential that it's specific to north of city schools. If it's specific to us and our needs, it takes away, in my view, some of the other political interests that could come into play about what it means for other jurisdictions. So if at the same time we work to build the things I just described in hopes that we don't have to go that route, then we also begin to develop the language that can go forward if we need to go the emergency route and so that we are ready. And if we have to, then that modifies that because we have to be ready with that information being submitted in early January so that we can get a response to it. So that's what I would like to do.
If I could, I do agree with that parallel approach, I think that's the right way to go. And I also wonder where is the State Department of Education review in this process? And is after February enough time for them to review in order for us to implement when we need to?
Well, of course, I'm not, I'm not the legal counsel, but my, my view of that is that the authority is with the local, the local board.
Yeah, and I, and I hear that, but then there's also this review that takes place. So is there a timeline to which they say, you still have the power, but we still are reviewing? I'm just asking a question.
That's possible, that the state education is not under a requirement since the ultimate authority is with you.
Right.
And so to an extent, they're participating out of interest and as a volunteer. So far, they've been pretty responsive, but since we don't have a mandate or a requirement, it's not impossible that they could get distracted by the General Assembly or something. But that it won't prevent us from proceeding, it will just deprive us of having, but we're working with them already. And so that we'll certainly try to not end up with a question that's unanswered by them.
Okay.
So we don't have to wait until January, we've started already.
Right, okay.
I thought it was my understanding that this, that the, they didn't have to give us their blessings to.
Right.
All they just have to have is for, for their knowledge, so.
Right.
I don't think that would hold us up at all.
I just wanted to clarify all that for everybody out there.
Okay, very quickly, Open Campus High School is the eleventh item with a different, slightly different timeline. Just wanna remind you of the, the purpose, of course, so far we've worked with committees across the ten, uh, recommendations for transformation linked to teaching and learning and operations. Open campus, uh, linked to operations and working in collaboration with teaching and learning thus far. Uh, we hope that, we plan to have the application delivered to the board next month for your review. It won't be ten, it will be one. And board action anticipated in December unless you say no to that and you want more, whatever you request around that. And to purp, remind you of the, of the reason we're even having discussion around open campus. Open campus specifically is recommended to address the removal of the overage for grade aspect at the middle school level to get them back on track using an approach that will allow them to be paced. Some can move in an accelerated manner, some can, can move at their own pace based on their needs. But the whole intent of the overage for grade in middle school in terms of removing those students and meeting their needs in the open campus is to get them on track. Because if you're sixteen and seventeen in middle school, you're not on track and mathematically, very difficult for you to graduate on time. But by doing this, we can get them back on track, they can have the opportunity to, to return to their home school on track or remain in open campus and graduate from open campus. That's one essential component. The second, we have students on all five of the high school grounds that are behind on credits to the point that mathematically, they cannot graduate on time in the traditional setting. That's not the child who needs to recover one credit or two credits because you can do that on the campus. Or you can do the, go to evening school, and some will, some won't, and pay four hundred dollars. So those things are obstacles that come into play with what we need to do. So that second piece is to be able to address the needs of those students that are severely behind in credits to the point that they can't graduate on traditional grounds, meet their needs in open campus, get them back on track. And if they get back on track in a timely manner, they can return to the home school and graduate from the home school, or they may opt to remain at the open campus and receive their high school diploma from their home school, but remain there. The last piece is to attract, is to reduce the dropout rate. At the same time, attract back those students that have dropped out. We know we have children that have dropped out now that won't return to a traditional high school setting for many reasons. And many of them, if they do return for any educational purpose, are really forced to go GED. Sometimes GED, that's helpful. However, we don't want to limit children that have dropped out when they can come back and have the option of getting a high school diploma. Right now, we're limited with that. That is what open campus will allow us to do. And so, you know, we did the RFPs for the program and the RFP for the facility, and all of these things will be, will come in the form of a recommendation to you. And, uh, you saw kind of a brief timeline with that. Dr. Simmons, any additional comments?
Well, in closure, we are preparing these students for college and career success. And that is really the main objective for the three categories you described. And within that realm, we intend to expand opportunities with this campus by forming relationships and MOUs with universities and with some skills, trades, courses that will be offered so that we can prepare them to enter the workforce as they graduate.
And as with anything budget, there's always an item of interest slash concern. So we're working feverishly to try to align and secure the necessities that will allow us to make this a, a, pretty much a wash in terms of what we do with students. And so, um, those are the pieces that remain to be seen along the timeline that I just suggested to you. That concludes my, uh, opening information. If you have questions or comments, then, downstairs.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Great presentation. The answer to your question is, I will enthusiastically support tonight your proceeding. I predict that I will continue to enthusiastically support it through the next phase and the next phase. What I'm enthusiastically supporting is the transition, Transformation Initiative and these ten transformation schools. Further questions will come regarding the open campus school, which I'm also very excited about. But to the idea of needing more, being ready and working, wording clearly. Wording clearly is critical here, and I'm gonna come at the end. I originally said that with twenty-five pages I had questions on, I've reduced it to five, so I'm glad I didn't type all of them in. And, and I need to do that, uh, tonight, but first, needing more. When we first started talking about this, uh, last school year, last spring, it was very clear, we needed more. We still need more, we need more time. We don't need more time in June, we need more time in August and September. That's very clear. We need more parental involvement, we need more community involvement, we need a lot more. The great thing about this initiative is all schools are bettering from it. All teachers are bettering from it, and all students are bettering from it. Not just the ten focus, uh, schools in this initiative with, with the various themes. Being ready, the question I will ask if the next time we have this phase conversation is, are we ready? I'm gonna be asking, are the teachers ready? Are the, is the central support staff ready to support the teachers? Are the parents ready? Are the partners ready? I'm gonna be asking, are we ready at each, for each application, for each of those components and maybe more? That's, that's a simple question, I predict the answer will be yes, but probably at varying degrees. And so that you could say, well, you know, maybe we're, we're not quite there yet and we need to move forward. But the, the last thing goes to wording clearly. Since the very beginning, it's very clear that we needed more, and we were talking about a new item here. If I want you to picture now my circular telephone that I had when I grew up with a party line? And now, okay, that was my telephone.
You can just call Sarah?
Right. Would you please get her online? And now this, both are telephones, but there's some difference. We're talking about this in terms of, and I was really pleased to see your, your interview on television. on television, the terms you were using in order to comply with required state requirements that are going to give us the right to have more time and do more things. Public conversion charter schools is the wording you are required to use in order to comply with everything so we get approval. True?
Yes.
And you're using that. The word I'm using is transformational school. The reason why, it's clear. This is certainly a telephone, but it's much more. It's a device. The transformational school has a theme, different themes. Transformational school has a lot of different things. But since the very beginning, when we first talked about this, I said, are these our teachers? Yes, Norfolk Public Schools teachers. Is this our budget? Yes, our budget. Is, is this our facilities? Yes, all of these things, ours, ours, ours. These are not charter schools. These are not charter schools. These are not charter schools. They are public conversion charter schools under the requirement, we have to use that conversation. I choose to use the transformational school because I think it's more clear. The confluence and the confusion that goes with people using, oh, I used my telephone and picturing the dial phone with a party line. When they hear the word charter schools, they conjure up an awful lot of things that have failed in the past and have not succeeded and they're not interested in now. This is something different. This is totally new. This is Norfolk Transformational Schools. And the reason why I want to clarify that is if we continue to summarize it and use the word charter schools for these 10 transformational schools, we are doing a disservice and we're confusing the issue. So, I request respectfully, and you've begun to do it, public conversion charter school is the word you have to use in order to gain the approval that you need to do the things that we want. Now, to my questions. On page 19 of the first application, since many of them replicate, I just, for consideration, not an answer. I would hope you would consider a student compact, not necessarily in this phase of development, but a student compact down the road. We've got parent compact, I just want to consider student compact. And I don't, yeah, don't need an answer, whatever. To, to the next page. Page 26, to the calendar issue.
Same school?
Yeah, we have the same school because many of them repeat. Page 26 on the first one, Booker T. Item four, page 26, information regarding proposed calendar. Rather than waiting down the line to start talking about, this is critical, I would hope we would have information sessions in talking about this because this goes to teacher contracts, this goes to an awful lot of things. So, the item around the school calendar has many implications, so I just would hope to have some more information about that. I'm ready to move if anybody else is. Page 30 on the first one, Booker T. All those items, pay differential, tuition reimbursement, induction ceremonies, mentoring program, moving expenses, laptops, all of these have budget implications. Early on, as we're going to be talking about a five-year budget related to facilities, related to technology, related to everything, these are critical. So, if we approve these plans and we say we're going to do all these things, this is a huge budget and you know that. So, this is just as a board member, something that's going to be very, very important to me. Just something that I don't need information tonight, but I'm very interested in the tiered staff development. I know what it means to me, I'd just be interested in it. That's critical. I see cascading being an element, but I don't want to use inside baseball terminology. I'm interested in the tiered, the tiered staff development. And the great thing about it is, this will get better each year. I don't see any of this being complete in the next year or two. And the last one was, again, the Richmond Times-Disgrace doesn't like pre-K, but I can tell you that they slammed one of our candidates for attorney, for lieutenant governor because he supported it. But you have made it very clear throughout here, these are our schools, these are our schools, these are our schools. Also, you made it clear that pre-K is more. We want to begin in August and September to have more time. We want to have interstation time. We need more time. Folks that have less, the economy over the past eight years has been devastated. It's devastated people who were poor more than it's devastated anyone else, and we know that. And so, it's affected a lot of things, and I, I think you, we can see a, I can see a direct connection to our scores. Pre-K could really go a long way, and I've been very excited to hear throughout the emphasis on pre-K. I know that doesn't apply to Booker T. In summary, in summary, that all of those things are the things I'm excited about, but I enthusiastically support your procedure. I look forward to asking, are you ready about those various departments? But I do need to know more about the calendar, more about the budgeting issues that we are agreeing to in each of the applications, and just curious about the tiered staff development. And thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Noel?
So, what I see as the next phase with my vote for possible support would be to look at the application in its entirety. And that would include the lottery system and how that's going to be implemented. That would include the role and function of the management team. And I think that it would probably be very beneficial for the high school and middle school, Booker T. and Lafayette, to include a student on the management team. And then, for students who would be coming from Lindenwood and the other schools, the other elementary schools perhaps have a student from Booker T. or whatever their high school is to be on that management team as well. I think that would be a good learning opportunity for them. The calendar, questions on how the calendar is going to be rolled out and the budget. So, for me, I don't disagree and I don't have conflict with the fact that we need to close the economic gaps, that we need to work harder with getting children modified schedules because clearly, we need to do that. If we don't put them in the seat and take advantage of the time that we have with them while they're in school, they are going to continue to have growing and growing gaps. So, I don't disagree with that. But what I want this board to do is to make a responsible decision on plans that are well thought out, that we have all of the evidence to support it, that we know that we are looking before we leap. And that before we invest in chartering on such a new endeavor, that we clearly know that we are on a path to success. And, and I think that we can do that with this. And to me, if we're not ready by January or December, it's not that big of a deal because I would rather have a succinct, succinct plan in place with all of the information rather than to try to rush something through. But in the process, what you're doing is you're providing the professional development, you're working around modified schedules, you're seeing how the teachers respond to it, you're getting more and more parents involved in it. I will tell you, when I am at the hospital, I do talk to the parents that I see, and I ask them, you know, what do you think about the transformation? And at the beginning, I didn't get that much of a response, but now, people are starting to understand what the word means and they're actually starting to ask questions. And it's good that they're asking questions because now they're starting to partake in their child's education. And that's really what we need them to do. So, what I see as a vote towards the next phase would actually be a potential completion in the application. That's what I'm hoping for. Or at least these questions answered, the budget, the lottery, the management team.
Okay. So, let's be real clear about, about that. So...
Is, is that doable? If it's, if it's not doable, it's okay. I just want to have realistic expectations.
Sure, I understand. And I, and I kind of want to hear from the administration what their response is to that, that expectation. So, are we saying at the end of this first phase, the applications would definitely be completed, I mean, based on what you are planning to do right now?
Yes.
There would be completed applications at that time?
Yes.
And I, and I will say, Rodney...
With the timeline provided.
Has, has, I think wisely advised in the past, not to paint yourself into a corner. And so, you know, is February really reasonable for all the work that's left to be done? And if it isn't, and you need to say March, that's okay. And I'm in agreement with you, Noel, we don't want to, we don't want to rush it. We want it to certainly be sound and well planned. I mean, I, I'm not...
I'm open, I'm not disagreeing with anything that you're saying, but I'm shooting for this.
Yeah, but I'm getting some look from both of you.
No, 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 we're shooting for January or February, but what I'm saying is, that's what we're shooting for. If we need to change that, I'm, I, I hear you.
And I'm not telling you you need to. I'm simply saying, I'm asking you, you, you know what, what needs to be done, what needs to be done, and you're hearing the expectations, you know, of the board for that timeframe. So, I'm, I think it would be better to have the time and not need it than in January say, sorry, not ready yet. Now, certainly that, you would be penalized for that, obviously, you know, not going to, huh? What were we finally...
We noticed it does say January slash February.
Certainly, I did notice that.
And to be honest, though, should the General Assembly be needed, it could be March, April. So, again, to your point, you just need to be flexible. I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, you're fine. You're fine. Ed?
I have a great concern over the pace of the implementation, much like Noel, but from a different perspective. I understand the need for transformation in the schools chosen and support the approach that the Division is pursuing. However, I believe that it's vitally important for the long-term health of the Division that these major initiatives be rolled out in a systematic and thorough manner. I believe that if we are careful in our rollout of the transformational schools, we will have models that have been tested with statistics that show the gaps closing and the ceiling risings. We will discover better ways to manage these schools, which will inform what we will do with future schools pursuing the same model. It would seem to me that a very careful approach, for example, would mean instead of selecting three schools for the Montessori transformation, that we would start a, a careful approach might follow your proposal to train teachers and to cert, and to certify those teachers and the full Montessori concept as opposed to Montessori-like concepts so that they could receive the full benefit of a, a proven method. I, I think that the method, from what I've been able to find out through research, is an excellent method. So, why not take the time to fully train our teachers in this? A, a more careful approach, I think, might involve choosing one school, for instance, as a model, which we could build on the other schools that are being proposed for the Montessori concept. And then, just phasing in this concept through several different grade levels while training the other teachers in that school for the, for the students that will come. I, you know, I, I believe that it's important for school board members to stay in their lane, so I, I'm not proposing to try to micromanage or to, to, to submit a proposal myself, but I do believe that, that that type of kind of very careful, slow implementation might, might help us. But I hang, I hang on the horns of a dilemma because I, like you, I, I want to see our parents, our parents, our teachers and administrators want to see transformation immediately. I want that as well. And it's my prayer that we'll provide a quality education for all of the students here in Norfolk. But I'd like to see additional funding, I'd like to see choices for families, I'd like to see the academic rigor, the extended school day, year that we've been talking about throughout the Division. But the stakes are very high for us concerning these transformational schools. And the risks that we take in doing this and not getting it right are, you know, are great. And so, I would propose that we go a little bit slower, in particular, in implementing a number of these schools that we have never had an example of in the types of schools that we're talking about. Furthermore, I think that a measured approach would allow the Division to prepare students who, who historically have not been, who, to prepare the parents who historically have not been involved in, in the education of their students, in particular, schools like these Montessoris that we're, we're talking about. It will also allow us to prepare a pathway on schools for students who have been, who have been prepared by the transformational schools. But most importantly, I think that we run the risk of placing a burden upon our teaching corps that will bring discouragement if we're not careful in this rush to, for professional development to implement these models so quickly. So, you know, I, I, I say this hesitantly, I, you know, I, I can see the real benefits of transformational models, but I, I hope that we go about this in a more deliberate fashion. Many of the questions that were asked earlier would not be questions because we would solve those problems over time if we were not at, if we were not going at such a fast pace. I'm also concerned that some of the schools have already started moving towards these models without the board approval. I was listening to what PB Young is doing and, and so, I, I just had some concern about that as we heard it through the media, that even before we have fully approved that. Now, PB Young may be the exact school to start that in, the Montessori model, but I, I want to be, I want to be sure that we're not moving too fast before these applications have been approved. So, those are my comments.
May I respond?
Yes.
I hope you also honed in on the results from the model as well. And we did not move forward with any item without board approval. I was clear with the board around the fact that we will begin professional development. What we did at PB Young was provide professional development. I said to the board that students would benefit immediately from professional development. I don't need board approval to do professional development. We also moved forward with Booker T. Washington High School in reference to training teachers around the Abbott approach. All of these are means. You hold me responsible for providing those means. You hold me responsible for providing professional development. I don't need board approval to do that. What I do want is board approval around these individual packets as a whole that I do need your approval around. Children can't wait. It's clear the needs across schools. And it sounds as if some of us are hesitant around whether we are ready to move forward with changing the way we deliver services to children based on those items that center on raising the rate at which children retain knowledge. That baffles me, but I totally respect what I hear from the board. However, the statistics are clear, and I am accountable for changing those. I am accountable for providing the means necessary to deliver those services. The board is certainly responsible for the ends, and the board has said it wants to move forward with the presentation. It wants to move forward with seeing an increase in the percentage of students meeting and exceeding standards. And I have recommended to you the intervention slash means that I feel will be necessary to see that happen. And so, I would recommend that the board consider allowing the administration to move forward with doing the things that you pinpointed, the lottery, information, the management team information, additional budgetary information, providing that to you, developing a full package for each individual school, providing that to you as well. And it will be in the form of a recommendation, and the board will have full authority to say no.
Thank you.
I want to get in a whistle, too.
And I want to just inform you that the forum for this, for this evening has been postponed due to inclement weather, so we have time to carry on. We were, the session was scheduled to end here 4:30. Is everybody okay with pressing on? Is everybody okay with pressing on? Yes. I know it's been televised via Channel 47, if we need a short break. I think, I think we need to get these comments before we break, because I think this is a, an important place in the, in the conversation. But if we need a break, just let me know. But I wanna go ahead and get these.
In response, I just wanna say that it's important for us to express what our concerns are as we move towards this decision.
Right.
So that the administration can respond to what are the concerns of the board.
Right, right. Thank you. Brad, and then Rodney, and then what?
With all due respect to my esteemed colleagues, in business, there's an adage. The most successful people are the ones that make the most decisions, not necessarily the right decisions. What that means is, is that in, if you read anything by John Maxwell, it's called failing forward. You move forward, you make mistakes, and you change on the way. Now, in your world, it's a little different, because when you make this, because you make a mistake and people die. But in business and in organizations, in organizations, it's making the most decisions.
Well, you learn from them.
In our world, in our world, it's just as important.
I've been very, very, yeah, I have not said a word. So, I, you know, I, what it's... You can, you, it, the biggest failure in organizations is paralysis by analysis, the biggest failure. Now, I don't question that we need more information on budget, on management teams, and on the lottery piece. I have no question about that. But to, to even deny the fact that we're gonna move forward on this, if the next phase is just planning, is insane. To ha- to expect to have the full packets before we approve the, the next phase is insane.
No, 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 that's what we're saying the next phase is.
Okay.
The next phase is to have everything put together so that we can vote on it, so that we can move forward.
But even then, you cannot have all the answers to the puzzle. It's gonna flesh out, because it's, again, Noel, I sat and listened to everything you said. I've, I've not said a word specifically, please don't interrupt me.
Okay, go ahead.
All right? To expect the administration, this is a brand-new project. It is not, we don't have data on, on, uh, other school systems that have done this, because it hasn't been done. Instead of looking at data, let's create data, let's cre- let's be leaders, let's be innovators, let's be motivators. Let's take a chance, because what we're doing hasn't worked. What we're doing has not worked, so let's have some, some, uh, some gumption and, and support this man in what he does. I think it's, I think we need to move forward on it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I wanna make sure he's...
I think it's safe to speak.
Go ahead, I'm done.
I'm not disagreeing with that. And, and when we look to the past, Dr. King very eloquently pointed out that the biggest predictor for failure is the economic gap. And that's what we clearly see, and we know what subgroups fit in that economic gap. And what he wants to do with these transformational schools is, over time, change that gap to where there is an economic balance within those schools, so that we can, through the data, which what we've learned in the past, what, um, the person that, uh, Mr. Jordan brought in, what was his name?
Oh, uh, Collin.
Collinburg told us was that when you do change the ratios for the economically disadvantaged, you do get better achievement rates. And that's what he wants to do, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying that, that let's, let's know what we're getting into with our vote when we approve the schools. Let's have as much information as we can, so that we know what the role of the management committee is, so that parents know what the meaning of a lottery is, so that we know how to plan budgetary-wise for, um, a, a year-long school calendar. That's what, that's what we need to know. I'm not disagreeing with any of the professional development, uh, the need for student achievement. I, I want to fully support him, but, but we're gonna need this information.
I don't disagree with you, but we can't have the entire pa- you can't expect them to know, have every... From, from what I'm hearing from you, you wanna know every conceivable possibility, every conceivable, um, I can't think of the word. I think we need to give them the opportunity to create these plans, look at them, if there's not enough information, only ask for more.
Brad, I don't think that's the case, I, and I don't wanna jump in, I know there's a lot to speak here, but I think, I, I think that, that, that the board is doing its job in, in asking questions of clarity and understanding about where we're going. And a part of our process is held to debate, analysis, raising questions, um, because we, we, we make, in my opinion, life and death situations in these roles. And so, I, I, I think that the conversation, the debate, the questions, the analysis is what we ought to be doing, and, and hopefully, we always arrive at the best decision. And, uh, and I, and I don't think there's anybody around the table, I don't know, that, that's not in support of our superintendent and what he's seeking to do, but I, but I, but I think desiring information and clarity and understanding is, uh, is a part of, is a part of the role that we play.
And I'm not questioning it.
Right, right, okay.
Perhaps out of choice, but I have not heard anyone that would stand in my way of making a motion, if you're seeking a motion, to authorize the team to move into the next phase of planning and develop the proposed transformation initiative. If you're seeking a motion tonight on that, then I would be pleased to make that motion. I just haven't heard any thing that would be contrary to that motion. So, I'd be pleased to make it, or I'd be pleased to wait.
Well, we're absolutely seeking a motion to that end, uh, and certainly, there's two ways we can do this. The right rules the law, and we'll call for a motion, and then continue discussion, if, if there's any.
Well, then I'd like to do that, because then, then you could keep your timeframe within two minutes. But I know Mr. Jordan has something to say, but I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the team to move into the next phase of planning, development for the proposed NPS transformation initiative.
Is there a second?
My second.
Probably move in a second, uh, end of discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, guess I should've gone first. I would, we talked about this a little bit at the, at our board retreat. So, I would like to be able to discuss the contents of what's being presented to me and ask questions around it, without it in any way having to do with, um, whether I support the superintendent or not. I'm trying to deal with a proposal. Um, I support fully, uh, the principles of what the superintendent has advocated and what's embedded in our board priorities and what's embedded in, uh, in our strategic plan. So, the fact that I have some concerns and questions about a specific proposal doesn't, doesn't change that for me. I don't mind being a little insane, um, but I, but I say that in this context, because I'm concerned about, uh, I think the superintendent is right about ends and means. But now I feel like I need some clarity, because the original plan was for us to receive completed applications for us to act upon. In the process, in the law, that this entire conversion charter initiative, public conversion charter, under school board authority, transformation schools, um, is under, is based on the concept that a board-initiated, um, charter can rest with the local board and not have to go to the state for approval. Our policy, our Norfolk Public Schools Board policy describes the process by which charter applications are to come before the board for action. These applications, as of right now, are to follow that process. That process calls for detailing the enrollment, detailing the budget, detailing displacement, identifying curriculum, teacher-staff and budget, all these things that we've been talking about. So, asking the questions and asking for they, those things to be complete is completely aligned with what the state law and what Norfolk Public Schools' policy requires us to do. So, I just wanna be clear, that's what this discussion is about. In terms of, uh, moving forward, what I would like to see is, um, you know, this parallel path. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we have schools right now that are in school improvement. We need to have a discussion around what does that mean? What is the status of these schools under school improvement? Dr. Stewart was mentioning transformation schools. Under the school improvement model, transformation is, is language that they use in that model. I can't remember all the other ones, what is it, turnover and, it's like four different options that are under the school, school improvement. And in all those four options, they are transformational items that they expect to be accomplished under all of those. I just like a, and I've said this before, I'm visual, so I just like a map, you know, some type of flow chart, something that you can put up that we can all see, that says, um, this is what's going on with school improvement. These are the things that we're doing, whether it's, uh, professional development, whether it's all these things that are in Indistar, you know, I wanna have a handle on that. Because I wanna know if none of this goes forward, for whatever reason, whether it's our action, state action, overcome by events, budget, whatever it is, we have children right now in our schools, many of which are under school improvement, and I want to clearly understand what the strategy is to get those children to perform at the levels that we all desire for them to perform. So, I, I just want to know that. And then I want to know how the transformation, or any other major initiative, then aligns, supports, supplants, whatever the case is, fits on that piece. Because I am concerned about, um, you know, I, I think there's a, there's still a capacity issue. We all know that, um, uh, whether you're talking teachers in the classroom, or in my view, whether you're talking, uh, other needs support staff, we know we have capacity issues we have to address. And so, while I do think that we can do many things, um, at one time, I just, as a board member, would just like to understand, you know, what are the stressors that we need to be aware of? And as we begin to talk about the budget, that we need to be prepared for, the weather, this goes through or does not, uh, go through. So, for me, before I would feel comfortable voting on continuing to plan, I would like to have some additional information about just where we stand right now and what the capacity is and what type of, um, you know, needs, I mean, what do you need? Do you need, you know, X number of, uh, person hours? I, I just don't have a good feel for that. But I do think it is critically important that, as a board, we understand, um, uh, what it means for the schools that we have under school improvement, what the state is expecting of us to accomplish with those plans, and then how, whatever it is that we approve and support aligns with those efforts, so that at the end, um, we have success. And then the, the last thing I'm just gonna keep harping on is, um, at the end of all this is a child. And, uh, we hope that child, and we believe that child has a active and engaged parent and family. And, you know, just like you make decisions around where your children attend, uh, those parents are making those same decisions. And so, at the end of this, wherever we end up, under whatever, uh, plan, parents have to have time to make decisions, and they have to have time to understand. And I had mentioned, I think, at the previous meeting, nowhere in this process have I seen yet, um, a public comment period other than there was something that we just got from, uh, the attorneys, and I think it was kinda mentioning with the open enrollment, with the open campus, a 14-day period in time for comment. We have not heard, uh, I mean, outside of the, the 25 or so transformation, I mean, as a board, we have not heard a single comment from a single parent, from a single teacher, from a single administrator, uh, principal. And that's not to suggest that, you know, I wanna, that's not to suggest, just, that's not to suggest that we should somehow open up a process to, uh, undermine the work of the administration. But I do think it is, I'll just speak for myself, I like hearing from parents. And before I got on the school board, when there was a public meeting, I did the best I could to be at that public meeting, so that I could give the school board my thoughts, so that whatever decision the board was gonna make, that the public had an opportunity for, for input. And under the traditional model, that's what it calls for, some time for public input. And I think we should build that somewhere in the schedule. I don't know if it's now, I don't know if it's later, but somewhere in the process, I think, as a board, we have, uh, a responsibility to hear from those that we're impacted.
Okay, thank you.
I kinda wanna comment on the motion, in addition to seconding it. And I'm gonna start off with where you left off, which is, I agree. And we did read today that there needs to be a public comment period of 14 days. But in addition to that, I think by having the public comment period, we enable us to get great support publicly, for people to come forward and say, this is a great thing, as well as learning more information. So, they could be our huge advocates, and I think we even need more advocates at the table to say, this is a great proposal, this is a great transformational initiative. I wanna learn more about it, so I could even be your advocate to others who may not know quite as much. So, I think we need to look at it as an opportunity, as well as an educational opportunity. Um, additionally, I would say, I will echo, like you've heard me before today, we need that parallel strategy with the General Assembly, we need to look at budget. I won't go on, 'cause we've repeated those others, but I think having the information is a good thing. And I think we are just doing our due diligence and asking the questions in so doing. And I'm not saying this relative to Brad, because we all came together with questions today, because frankly, we know we need to learn more, and today we learned something new. And that was because we did ask the questions last week after we got the drafts, and mind you, they were drafts, and we knew that. So, in preparing the questions for you all in advance, I think you were able to answer some more questions today. And obviously, you've done more work at Legal to have some more knowledge about what we can do or can't do. So, I think that's good, too. So, I think just the constant engagement of dialogue with us and you all together as a governance team is very important, so that we all walk out together and can be able to articulate to the community, what is it we all know, what is it we all don't know, and what is it we need to further discuss.
All right.
I'll be happy to follow any other board member, because I've got a lot of time.
Okay.
For 40 years, I've asked two questions at the end of big decisions. Will this help students learn, and will this form a more perfect union? I believe continuing planning on this transformation initiative will help students learn, just even the continuing to plan, and will help form a more perfect union.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would only add that I think, Rodney, to your point, uh, about understanding better, um, the status of the schools that are in improvement with this particular plan aligns with that. Uh, uh, it's not an either-or matter for the direction that the motion has been made for us to go. I think that should be included, uh, in, in, in our conversation. I certainly made note of that, make sure that we include that in, uh, in, in, uh, in, in agenda item very, very soon. There's a motion on the floor. Um, are we ready to vote? Yes.
This may be a tad bit out of place, but there were a couple of board members that wanted to just discuss amongst the board what our priorities are. Uh, what things do we want to hear a little bit more of, what do we want to gain knowledge of? And I do appreciate having these conversations on the transformational initiative. But even more so, I do wanna hear the conversations on the strategic plan.
Sure.
How this year it's being rolled out. Dr. King mentioned that there's, there's quarterly updates that he would want to have for these transformational schools. We need those quarterly updates now for every school. And, and what, what I would like as a board member, and I'm just discussing this with the board, is I would like to have some more discussion on that versus this. And I can, I can fully say I will let them take this, do what they need to do, to prepare it, to present the applications to us. But as far as future meetings go, I would like to now shift gears and let's focus on what the rollout of the, um, first part of the strategic plan is doing.
Number six, on the agenda, it's coming out, actually.
Okay, I just...
Bring it up, read on it, just a moment. I'm with, I'm with you.
Chip asked another question of Dr. King.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, the...
The, um, the waiver process, the state, um, that allows for, uh, districts to request waivers around, starting before Labor Day and other things that falls in innovation or experimental and so forth. Have we, have we applied for those waivers and when, and if so, when would we hear, hear back from, from the state?
We did submit, um, a grant proposal to the state for a new round of funding for what they're classifying as year-round. So we have submitted that because there's some dollars associated with that and we have not heard yet. And that is depending upon funding from the state.
So does that include for each of these ten schools, the waivers for starting before Labor Day and anything else associated with seat time and the other things that you all discussed that may be eligible for us to, to, to move forward with?
That was specific to starting prior to Labor Day. Uh, we will have to complete a waiver per school. There's, it's a red tape waiver, as it's called, to get some, um, flexibility around the SOQ. And, and we began those conversations.
So, but the, but the, to your point, yes, just in case, uh, we wanted to exercise multiple opportunities to, to attempt to get the time necessary. And so we did submit the necessary information to the state to attempt to secure the adoption that we just mentioned. But that, that is separate from the, the, um, waiver for modified seat time.
Okay.
So to answer your question about calendar, yes, that's been submitted.
So the seat time one is something that we would, we still need to submit? And we would do that, I don't know how the process works, but when would, when would we do that?
On our pencil timeline, it says that, that we would submit that January, February if this does not move forward.
And this, and, and then the state responds?
Within ninety days.
Within, within ninety days.
All right. The motion's still on the floor and I would, uh, call for a roll call vote.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
I, I just appreciate a, uh, a motion that, um, would give more, uh, specifics without, um, getting into the weeds in the way of the superintendent. Uh, so I just, I just think the motion is too open-ended for me at this time, so I have to vote no.
Dr. Stewart?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Easton?
Aye. Motion carries, so it is ordered. While we are in this segment, I would say though, that, uh, Mr. Jordan, if there are some specifics that you wanna offer, I think it would be appropriate to offer that as the administration moves forward. Or is there something you wanna...
Specifics are around...
Around the plans for moving forward.
Wait, why, like, like I said earlier, I just, there's existing school improvement activity that I think we have to have a handle on to make sure that, um, if there are other supports and things that the administration needs to be successful with that, while at the same time trying to continue to plan and work on this. I just think we have to make sure that we are pulling time and resources, um, for something that we hope will happen when we need, I think there's some opportunity to give some additional focus and attention to something that is happening and must happen.